Okay, good evening. It being after 6:00 PM, I'll call this April 13th meeting of the Board of Selectmen's Order. Please join me in saluting the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we don't have any minutes to approve tonight. Onto the warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 12 for $347,639.03. CDBG warrant number 1053 for $22,098.82. General warrant number 1054 for $51,906.29. And school warrant number 1052 for $33,744.22.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Senior Center postage reimbursement?
Charles, please get me happy of the receipt, but she didn't get it to me in time, so.
Okay, so we're passing over that next time? All right, we have nothing under old business. So, moving on to new business. We have a new hire for the police department. Chief?
I'd like to introduce Mr. Mark Sawyer for your consideration appointment to the police department. He's a full-time police officer. Just a little bit of background, he's been a full-time police officer for three years. He's resident of Westbrook Field. I know before when we started this process, many people were to the department and said that if this person was to apply to our department, that we should seriously consider it. And that being said, we put him through the same basis as every else, the advisory committee met with him and two other candidates. And between all three of them, it was unanimous that Mr. Sawyer was their choice to move forward in the process. I can also tell you that Lieutenant Daley did a very thorough background check, including talking to the previous employers, references, neighbors, home visit, did a complete background check and everything, as we anticipated. Couldn't have gone any better. We're very happy with everything how it turned out. I am very happy and proud to present Mr. Sawyer to you for your consideration to be appointed as our next police officer.
Well, the chief hasn't steered us wrong yet, so... Do you want to just tell us a little bit about you that the chief has?
Sure. A little about me, I grew up originally in Winchendon. I went to Gardner High, that was kind of where we eventually moved. My parents bought a farm in Hubbardston, so I lived there for a little while until they eventually bought a home in Westbrook Field. And I just love the Brookfield area as a whole. It was very, it's a very, I won't say slower atmosphere out here, but I'm used to, you know, the Gardner pace, which is a little bit not my style. I like to kind of know the places where I, especially where I work. I currently work in the town of Barry. I like knowing my community, I like knowing the people that live there, get to know them. Have a little bit more of a personal connection with them rather than go to a big city and just, as I say, just walk and meet type of thing. Very big in community policing. To the aspect that I learned over the academy. And especially through the part-time academy, which I had Chief Smith here, was one of the directors for my part-time academy back in 2015. But I'm very excited to start or continue my career here and start working here.
I see you got the life-saving medal?
Yes, sir.
Last year?
Yes, sir.
What's the story behind that?
There was an overdose that I come in, it was during the whole COVID-19 spike. We had changed 12-hour shifts. And a call came in, and of course it's on one of the furthest roads on the outskirts of town, of course, as it usually comes in. I arrived on scene, and the male already had no pulse in the backseat of the vehicle. The girlfriend was attempting CPR, however, she was trying to give CPR while he was sitting in the seat. For responders know, that's not good. I was able to get on scene and remove him from the vehicle. I did CPR for approximately eight minutes, give or take, until my backup, which was Chief Rogowski, the fire chief, had shown up. He administered four doses of Narcan. And we were able to get a pulse back. Just doing CPR just by itself.
Excellent. I just like those stories.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
No, I don't. I really get resume.
Yeah, anything?
So you play the drums?
Yes, sir.
Basketball, lacrosse?
Yes, sir.
And soccer?
Correct.
We gonna see any of that?
Actually, we were just talking about that, our last encounter, I'd love to get back into coaching. I did coach for Gardner High for numerous years, boys and girls varsity and junior varsity programs. So I would love to get back into the coaching, coaching game a little bit. I did enjoy it, it was a lot of fun.
Be cool to get the youth involved with the police department.
Absolutely.
I know Mark would like to go and shoot some hoops also.
Yeah.
So maybe we can get Mark and Mark against some of the local kids.
Absolutely.
You know? It sounds great. And you do work with dogs, the canine?
Correct, yes, sir.
We don't have that yet, but Mark's got a puppy that maybe you can train.
I just got a puppy. I just got a puppy. And he's a lot of work, Jeremy Shepherd, but he's a, put in the work and you get the severe, sort of the grit reward.
These are the kind of questions I ask of people. They'll ask the tech stuff, but you know, I want to kind of get to know who's coming in, so.
The chief's a great lead singer, we may be able to get the band back together with the drummer.
We got the drums, we just need the strings and...
I do collect guitars as well, that's all.
Nice.
Nice.
We can make something work.
Just to make it a little friendly.
All right.
It looks good.
Will he be able to chase me down?
I don't think anyone can.
Good answer.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I move to appoint Mark Sawyer to police officer. Starting soon possible.
Second?
May I second? Any further discussion to be had? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
We're gonna do one of these.
Yes, great.
Unfortunately, if it wasn't for the times, we would have done this sooner than we did. But down the road, we anticipate that we're going to do a community meet and greet, so, which we would have done, but unfortunately can't right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully soon rather than later.
Yeah, and we'll have to do something as soon as we can for other purposes too, just to...
Right. Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Get your sneakers off.
Five more minutes. All right, so we got the, an extension to the Cider Mill Road voice book project?
Yes. Just need to send it back with a letter. Looks like everything's good to move forward, it's just going to take a little longer than they had originally anticipated.
Oh, so this is to extend the agreement with Fasun O'Neil, the engineers on the project?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize the extension.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then next is, what, 61A release?
Mm-hmm.
Lay nav Gustafson property?
Yep, just like about a half an acre. They have originally had planned for the solar field up there, and they needed to make the access road a little bit bigger, so. And HACOM and planning board already signed up on it.
What happened over there was, just so that you know, the planning board with the screening of the solar fields and everything, asked if they could put the, all the telephone poles into the tree line instead of putting it out into the orchard part to kind of screen it as you were coming up the road on old Westbrook Field Road. So when they did that, it became part of Gustafson's property. And that was in the 61A. So they, the power company did do that for the planning board, but then it became this issue with the 61A. So that's why we're here for that, so. It just made it so that the, all the telephone pole ugliness there was screened a little bit from the roadway, so.
Okay, so under 61A, the town has the right of first refusal of purchase. We don't have any money, obviously, so. I'll entertain a motion to sign off on the 61A.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have to review that, but that's going to take more than a couple of minutes that we have. Schedule a grand opening and tournament for the disc golf course.
Okay.
That's yours.
So all, so as most of you know, that we've been working on a disc, nine-hole disc golf course in the town park. All nine baskets are in, most of the trails are cleared, and we're hoping to have a grand opening on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. We're playing with the idea of having a tournament and also kind of a, I don't know, introductory, introduction to the park itself for any town residents that want to come down and, you know, play, learn about it. There'll be some guys there that play all the time that are willing to show you how. They've got extra discs and stuff that they'll, they'll be loaning out, I guess you could say, and walking around the park with you. So there are nine holes, and then I think we plan on extending it at some point if we have enough interest.
Excellent. So more information to come on the time and the...
Yeah, I think, I think the family part will be like late morning into early afternoon, so it's not, you know, not too early, but then again, not too late. And then maybe we'll do hot dogs or something.
Okay. Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, so.
Jason, do they need help clearing more down there, or are they good?
They've got a crew going in this coming weekend. Both days, Saturday and Sunday. So if anybody wants to go down and help with the people that have been doing it, that would be great, just show up, you know, Saturdays or Sunday morning. There's supposed to be people there, so I suppose that's weather permitting, so.
Supposed to snow, but...
Yeah.
Well, you with the snow shovels last couple of meetings ago.
It's still out front.
Yeah. My trail crew is, we're, we got two weekends more to go up on the Brickyard Park property up there. But maybe after that, if it works out, I can maybe get, if you need it.
Okay.
I can maybe get the guys to, a couple of them to come down. We did it last year, we cleared seven holes down there. When Joey asked, so, but if you need something else, you know.
I was thinking about the corner of 148 and 67, it looks really horrible.
Yeah.
Where that big electric power is. Yeah, whatever, stanchion, is that what that's called? We've got to get that mowed and cleaned up there too. So, and I don't know if you want to think about doing some sort of bushes or something there. It is kind of ugly. And if the park's in full swing, then we should probably do something that makes it look nice.
Yeah, he's got a sign right there, isn't there a sign right there?
There is a, a big sign.
In the corner?
Yeah.
Maybe we could neaten that up.
Maybe an uplight or something.
Yeah, but how are you going to light it? We'd have to do something solar. You could get a solar light that would come on.
Do you know any electrician that can?
Not any good ones. Not any good ones.
Don't say that.
All right, so, anything else on that? We all set with that?
All set.
All right, so it's now 6:15, and we have a poll petition hearing scheduled for 6:15. What do we got to? Want to read the, I guess we got to read the, the hearing notice?
Should be like, it should say petition to move poll.
We got the order here, but... Oh, petition, yeah, back of page one?
Yeah. That's the 61A.
I'm still looking for it. Oh, that, okay. "To the Board of Selectmen of North Brookfield, Massachusetts. Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid in Verizon, New England, request permissions to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. North Main Street, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, to relocate one J.O. pole." What's that?
Join-on.
Join-on, okay. "On North Main Street, beginning at a point approximately 61 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Bell Street, and continuing approximately 25 feet in southwest direction. Relocate pole 16 approximately five feet north. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked North Main Street, North Brookfield, Massachusetts. Number 30026783, March 9, 2021. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross-arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signals, signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes." Okay. And that's by Pat Cody, Engineering Department of Mass Electric in Albert Basset, Verizon, New England.
Is there a plan for undergrounds that you know of?
No plans.
Okay.
A customer just asked us to move a pole that was blocking a driveway, and we just need to move it five feet north.
Yeah. You have anything?
I do. When is the other pole coming out?
That is up to Verizon. We tell them, we give them immediate notice when we're off of it and the new pole's set. And sometimes it, they could be out there in two weeks, and sometimes it could take a couple of months.
Or 10 years? We have 53 double poles in town right now that we've had issues with.
Yeah.
So my question is, when for that one, at least?
I can't give you the time, it's a drive.
Are they going to put it in the middle of the sidewalk, or are they going to put it towards the curb? They can't go in the middle of the sidewalk.
Yeah, we can't have it in the middle.
Yeah, it's on the curb.
Well, where the hole was that they had started was kind of in the middle of the sidewalk.
It was.
And we can't have that, because the plow has to get through it. So your engineering needs to be out there when they drill the hole, I think, to make sure it goes at the curb.
I'll come back out tomorrow and put a mark.
Okay.
Because that, the other pole has to come out, because it's blocking the driveway, that's the whole purpose of the relocation, right?
I have something that I want to say about it?
Yeah.
Okay, because it abuts to our property?
Mm-hmm.
A few things. The pole that's in there now was put in July of 20, or not April? Exactly, April 23rd, 2015. The two poles were together until after July 2016, when they finally took the original pole out. The holes, all down North Main Street, the holes were left throughout that winter. They didn't even, the holes didn't get filled for another several months. Okay, so as far as this being a parking spot and moving it, that slab that's up there, it's up 13 by 13. There's a, it's a limited space for even putting a parking space in there. Because they got the tree there, our boundary lines, which there's a court document that says they can't put pavement within a foot of the boundary line. So that would be off by a foot. So the parking slab was created in 1999 after an agreement between properties of 280 and 282. The slab should be minimum of one foot from property line. Hang on, I can't see what I'm reading. There's limited space for parking due to a property line, retaining wall in a tree, fits only one compact car at an angle with the bumper hanging over the, over the sidewalk. Alicia, the first five years we lived there, Alicia lived there, and that's all she had was the small compact car, and it was always in at the angle, and the bumper was always over on the sidewalk, because there's no real, it's not really a parking space. The original pole existed before parking slab installed. The new pole was installed April 23rd, 2015. Original pole now removed, already went through with that. All right, the purpose of moving the pole is solely due to selling property with off-street parking. That's what I was told by the owner. He just wants to be able to advertise it as a house with off-street parking. I did go and look, and it had already been being sold like that. The new owner, he purchased the property sight unseen. He got it through an auction. He never even went to look. All right, and here's where the interesting part comes. Because they've been drilling so much, in 2015, we had a slight little dip. I mean, it was a very slight little dip, held a little bit of water in the corner of our property adjacent to his. 2015, when they drilled for the new pole, it did something underground where we now have a sinkhole. After they drilled twice now, over the winter, that's that big mess that you see up there now, that sinkhole in our, in that corner is like bad, and it's getting really bad. And I believe that's due to they're drilling into a ledge that is all up in there. Now, both times that they came out to drill, and the holes are about this far, and here's the curb, they're in this far, and then the circle. Okay? You can't tell that now, because there's so much dirt and everything else is on top of that. But both times that they were in there to drill, they had a new pole up there, sitting on a truck on Bell Street. I watched them doing the whole thing. The second time was the worst, because that's when they went right down into that ledge. My whole house was shaking. I was shaking, because I don't like sinkholes. Now, a question we had is why the pole, when you're looking at his house, here's where the pole is. They're going this way, it's five foot, and then the second pole hole that they drove is seven foot away from the original pole. They're both in on the sidewalk, because there are two holes right now. Which why it brings it to here, but that's not going to help him with his, with the issue of that slab. I have a picture. I have pictures. This is the two together. Don't let me come up there. This is a picture of the original, pole, which is up, here's the driveway, here's the driveway, so it's always been there. And how they go in at an angle, stopped in front of that tree, but at this point, they're on our property.
Okay.
Because it's a little bit further over.
No, is this, are they, the restrictions you're talking about, are "they" on a deed that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, or is it just an agreement?
It's a boundary line agreement dated of 19, I took my glasses off, so here's the agreement. Old, I can't help it. That I got from the Registry of Deeds, Mass Land Records.
They'd have to do a curb cut also to put a driveway in there with highway.
Right.
Because you can't just...
There is one on the opposite side of the house.
Right.
There's already a...
Right, there's no driveway, but it's already curved.
It's a grassy hill.
Yeah.
It's just a steep hill.
So there's a curb cut on the other side.
There's already one that is already there. And for whatever reason, they decided to put an asphalt closer to ours. Because I guess they didn't want to have to build up to that driveway.
Right.
Because it's kind of steep.
Yeah.
Is it currently one foot away from the boundary line?
The, yes, the pavement is one foot away from the boundary line. Look, he's talking about wanting to be able to have a two-car parking space. What he explained to me was, he could just drive, you know, he could drive his truck up in there and just go further up. But if he has a truck there and there's another vehicle here, the second vehicle can't go very far because of the tree, they have to take that tree out.
Yeah, but that's a different issue than the pole petition.
Right.
That would be a zoning enforcement or a violation of the...
Right. The issue I'm, because where the holes are right now, they're going to have to drill another hole. Because these ones are on the sidewalk.
They're in the sidewalk?
They're in the sidewalk.
Yeah, we can't have that, because how's the plow going to get through there?
Right, the original pole was partially on the curb and on the street. And, listen, you love it. The second pole... This pole here was on the street.
Yeah.
They came forward, so behind that, from the street to the back of this pole, is almost 10 inches. And that's where it's on the sidewalk.
Into the sidewalk, yeah.
The next pole, the circle that they had made in the pavement before they started drilling...
For the third pole.
For the third pole was in even more.
Why so many poles? Why are they, do you know why there's so many pole holes and...
I don't, to be honest, I...
Both times they came out, they drilled the hole, I think they hit the ledge. I don't even know if they drilled through the ledge that time, but I know all work stopped, but they did have poles on the back of trucks up on Bell Street. Everybody left, and the snow came and all that.
The reasons that they...
Then they came and they drilled another hole, this time, they didn't go into the original hole they had. They dug another hole, and this time they drove down into that ledge. And again, they had the poles sitting over there on the truck.
And then they got stopped.
Then everybody left.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I guess what we need to do is put conditions on the pole. We need those holes filled and packed tight, right? So that it doesn't subside anymore of the property. It's going to leave dips if you let it subside too much, right? So they need to be filled, and then...
Are there holes currently there?
It's a mess, there's, you can't even walk on the sidewalk now, all winter long.
No, all the people that are walking, they're going into the street.
The guys left a mess there, and I had shown it to Kyle Hartwick, I sent him a picture of it, and that's as far as it went. But right now, you can't walk on that part of the sidewalk.
All right, so I think, do you have any more that you wanted to add, Andrew?
I don't, what I didn't understand was when they keep going this direction, you know, like the five foot and now seven foot that way, for that, they could have just come over two foot to the property line with the pole set on the curb. That would have given him every access. If they go with the further off, the way they're going to have to come into this area, you know, they're going to be able to pull in and pull out, it's only going to be one car, one compact car to be able to do that. But now they're going to start running real close to my property line again.
So you think if they went south instead of north?
I think if they went south, yes. You unlock it with the south instead of north.
This way, this way instead of that way.
This way instead of that way, yes.
Is that something you can do?
Yeah, I can redesign it.
Okay. But then still I have the concern, and this is my big concern, is that sinkhole.
Well, that's why we're going to have them built, and then...
That's on her property, though.
That's on our property.
On her property. On her property, since they've been drilling, her property's been dipped.
Oh, it's good. This year, this year after the winter, after they went through, we got giant cracks in the pavement up on top, and it was big. I don't even know if there's land underneath of that now. I don't even walk near it, I'm afraid of some sinkholes.
Yeah, because I got to park my company truck right there, and I'm always having to make sure that I park and off to the side of the dip.
Yeah.
You know, it's like...
Is there any way we can find out what's under there that's doing that? I mean, do you guys run into that when you're drilling that you're...
That's the first I've ever heard of something like that happening. As far as the hole, they probably hit ledge, and they probably...
Yes, they definitely, for the pole that they got there now, that's in the ground now, they hit ledge. They had to bring out the heavy-duty, drove down into, shook the whole house in the ground. And they got that pole in, which I was fine once it was in, but then we started noticing that sinkhole started getting bigger. And I was just watching it, and then after they drilled the next two holes, one of those times again, they took the big drill that went down into the ledge. Now that's, I mean, you got a dip. It's a very obvious, and it scares me.
So if they come to the right little bit, or south?
Yeah, to the south.
Is that going to affect your parking?
No.
Not as long as they keep it in line with the property line?
Yes. If they keep it in line with the property line, it would help him for his parking. It would help, it wouldn't affect us there.
Yeah.
The only adverse effect then is the sinkhole. What am I going to do about that? Because I don't even know who I talk to or how to, but if it's them drilling that's causing it, that's an issue too. That's what you guys are on the charge of.
I can't help you there, but if he can re-engineer it to go south instead of north, and it doesn't affect, maybe if you could mark your property line and say...
It's marked.
Maybe you could get...
Big, big white rock.
Get with highway, maybe get with highway and have him help out. Help out a little bit, I don't know.
So my resident gravel expert who's watching says it's not the ledge. If it's a sinkhole, it would be glacial till under there that's subsiding it.
So how do I fix it?
So your glacial till is off.
It's allowing water to permeate into the ground, so it just needs to be filled in. We can help you out there, so I don't think we...
And then I can pave it back over.
Yeah, if, yeah, that's what it needs to be, so we can remedy it.
That makes me feel better.
So is that, is that something you'd prefer than to go the opposite direction?
Yes, south, just the two feet to the south, you know, rather than seven feet down, and they've already got a mess there. I don't even know how they, because the hole, and then they got another hole, but if they have to push it back towards the road, there's going to be a third hole there, and it just, it's crazy.
Then your glacial till is going to be worse.
Yeah.
No, you got to use crushed gravel if you want to pave over it.
Yes.
So come on and look.
Okay. So, thank you very much. As long as I don't fall in, people ain't making fun of Tina underwater.
So can you guys re-engineer that up there somehow, or highway and with the homeowner and the other homeowner?
Yeah, as long as it's not blocking any more driveways.
No, this, by going over that two foot right at the property line, that won't block his driveway, and it won't block our driveway. Okay? And it might help him line up a little bit better for backing in. Because he's a bad guy.
That, and it would, it would also leave the ability for him to make the driveway bigger going towards his property instead of his.
Right.
So it actually would help him too.
So can we approve a contingent on moving it to the south?
Maybe have it re-engineered from them to come back?
Yeah, I can, I can come back with a new plan.
So I don't want to have to post it and do all that kind of stuff again, right? So can we just leave this hearing open?
Yeah.
And for redesign?
And then when we get the new plan, we can approve it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do that ASAP, and we'll approve it ASAP. We'll just leave this hearing open for the new plan, and then we can expedite it, so we don't have to repost and wait two weeks and all that stuff.
Oh.
Sound good?
Sound good.
All right?
And your friend's going to come out and help. I know if I stand in the middle, I'm going to suck in and we end up in China.
But you'll only go down this far, Tim, so you'll be all set.
Are you sure? Are you sure? Because that's the part that scares me the most. How deep is it going to go? We lived in Florida for sixteen years. Them sinkholes take in whole houses and cars. And then everyone, in Pennsylvania, there was a sinkhole opened up, a man named Gary White and his tractor, all went into it.
Yeah, they make the national news, it's still an ongoing problem down there. I know there's parts of the villages down there.
I was a teen and afraid of walking by grapes on the road for fear of he pop up out underneath. That would be bad.
All right, so we're going to leave the meeting open, or the hearing open.
So we just recess the hearing?
Huh?
We just recess the hearing?
Yeah, we'll get to that. If we want to make a motion, recess, that's fine.
I'm hoping that we recess this poll hearing until the new plan is made to move the polls out.
Take it.
All right, Olivera, all right, good. And we'll get that from you, and we'll take action. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That work for you?
Yeah.
Works for me.
All right, the last thing we got to do before, we have executive session after this, what, six forty-five? So we just got to do the warrant for the special and the annual town meeting. I've got to go over and make sure we get everything. So special town meeting will be May seventh, right? And the annual town meeting is the same, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Annual town meeting is the fourth, no?
May seventh. We open the annual town meeting, and then we adjourn to June fourth.
So, yeah, for the annual town meeting, there's a whole bunch of stuff that comes up, and one of them is setting the budget, because we don't always have numbers in May, so we always move those to June. But we take action on a number of other things, so I'll go over them. So for the special town meeting, it's a lot of transfers. We're going to just transfer between accounts. Makes it easier for the town accountants to do it this way, so this is the way we're going to do it. So there's an article to transfer five hundred from the accountant's other expenses to the single audit to cover that expense. Five hundred dollars from other expense to software maintenance to cover a balance there. Transfer a thousand dollars from the certification salary to the accountant's salary, because that's going to run short. And we have Nancy Niko, who is our retired town accountant, helping out with the new town accountant, so we need money to cover both of them running concurrent. And then some of two thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents from the treasurer training salary to the accountant's salary. Then there's four fire department ones. Transferring five thousand from the assistant fire chief's salary account to the air tank lease account. We have one in here, provisional one, to transfer a sum of money from other available funds to the fire air pack lease. But we're going to try to, we use green gold money for that, right? So...
Yeah, so that one will pass over, or I can take it off completely, actually. Because the green gold one is the next one.
To transfer from the fire department personnel stabilization account to the lease payment. Oh, yeah, because we're going to change that around. We voted that incorrectly for percentages-wise. It should have been twenty-five percent to the fire department from the green gold money, and thirty-five percent to the lease payment stabilization account. We voted it backwards, I don't know how that got mixed around, but we need the money in the lease payment, because that's the eighty-five thousand for the fire truck that we pay. So that needs to be changed around, and that'll help with the air pack account also, I think. Nine twenty-five from the fire vehicle repairs account to the fire salary account. And that's always a moving target, fire salaries, because of the nature of the work that they do, it's hard to budget for how many fires you're going to have or emergency responses, so we anticipate that every year. The police department needs some money transferred from personnel. Oh, that's the green gold stabilization, right?
Yes.
To supply expense to pay for that speed sign that we have out there, and that is, the two speed signs we have, along with doing all the payment, they've been really good to us, so we need to pay that. The five thousand from police salary account to the part-time salary account. Eleven hundred from the salary account to the career incentive account. They need twenty-five hundred from the shift differential to the gasoline expense account. Thousand dollars vehicle police supply expense to repair expense, just moving a lot of money around in different line items. They have money in training expense to the police office expense account. Vehicle and police supply expense to the police office expense account. Shift differential to the animal control salary account. Police training salary to the uniform expense account, so, and that takes care of the police. Highway, twenty-three eight from the highway salary account to the tree warden's expense Water, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the retained earnings account to unpaid bills. And again, some retained earnings to the water system improvement. They're an enterprise fund, so they don't hit the general budget anyway, that's not an issue. Town to transfer out of sewer, fourteen thousand from the sewer department clerk to the solid waste disposal. Fifteen thousand from sewer operator two to the sewer waste disposal. And a thousand dollars from sewer operator two to the sewer salary. And the treasurer is some rescinding of actions taken earlier. It's the remaining unissued amount on the elementary school roof. So that's just rescinding and appropriation, right? So that's not a transfer really. Twenty-three hundred from board of selectmen technology account to the purchase of service to pay for the appraisal. Let's see. Six thousand from the board of selectmen technology account to the town office expense to pay a portion of the town office rent. Did that go up?
No. No, it's just hard at the end of the year, because the town office expense account gets pretty low. So I have it in other accounts, I just need to transfer it.
Board of selectmen's street lighting account to the board of selectmen town office expense Some money from the town office expense account to the FY twenty prior year unpaid bills. It's a hundred thirty-eight dollar bill from last year that wasn't paid. So the town clerk wants two hundred dollars from the ZBA clerk's salary account to the ZBA advertising account. What's that for? Is that like a postage thing?
I think so.
Oh, Tara's on the ZBA, that's all. I was just getting thrown from the town clerk.
Oh, yeah, 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 she submitted it, so, yeah, I should have put ZBA in there.
So then the article, other articles. To see if the town will vote to authorize a board of selectmen for and on behalf of the town, upon such terms and conditions as the board deems to be in the best interest of the town, to convey the Mass Electric Company National Grid and such other utilities as may be necessary or advisable to support or service a cell tower, a perpetual easement to install, construct, reconstruct, repair, replace, add to, maintain, and operate for the transmission of electrical current and intelligence on underground and above-ground systems and all necessary equipment facilities and appurtenances in, under, on, or through the land located at the water department, known as fourteen Bell Street, and to authorize such board to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the foregoing vote. So that will be an article. I think that's to upgrade the water department, right?
Yes, it is.
They need an upgrade.
Is that the cell tower up there for the state police that we're doing, or?
I believe so.
Yeah.
That might be it.
I think it is.
Yeah, we're doing the cell tower for the Mass State Police, and they are trying to upgrade the internet service up there, too, so this will cover both. It'll just, basically just give them an easement to go up there and do work.
And fix, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then the next, the rescinding of the vote for twenty-five percent into the, for the impact fee to the lease stabilization payment, and changing that to thirty-five percent. And then the next one is to rescind the thirty-five percent in twenty, and make it twenty-five percent for the fire department, so swapping those two around percentage-wise. Let's see, what else have we got?
That's the next one.
Oh, you changed the language?
Well, it wasn't complete.
Okay.
And I think that's...
Yeah, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town moderator to appoint a three-person regional school district planning committee, according to Mass General Law Chapter Seventy-One, Section Fourteen, which shall consist of one member of the school committee and two other citizens, to explore joining an existing regional school And then, to see if the town will vote to purchase the property at sixty-three sixty-five Donovan Road in North Brookfield. So, and that would end all the articles for the special, right? Okay.
Can we get that?
This one?
The regionalization committee that we have right now is having another meeting on April twenty-eighth, so they may have a recommendation of which school system to pursue after that meeting.
Okay.
So...
Good, so we'll have it on the wire in any way, in case we can act on it. So that concludes...
The special meeting.
That concludes the special articles. So the annual town meeting, or the usual annual town meeting ones for the most part. Article one is the election, which is held on...
The third.
Third, Monday the third. Make sure you come out and vote. It's vitally important that you vote in the local election. Usually, we see a drop-off on voters at local elections that aren't attached to a national election, but you're choosing the direction of your town, so please come out and vote. Article two, to act upon the reports of the selectmen, that's the selectmen, what's that, the book that we...
Town report.
And then authorization to print the town reports for 2020. Article four is to fix the salaries of all elected and appointed officials of the town. That's the one we usually pass over until June, when we have our numbers more than in view, because, you know, they got the cherry sheets and stuff like that, so we're still waiting for the state. Right now, I can tell you, according to the numbers right now, we're unrestricted government aid from the state is a hundred thousand dollars less than it was last year. Chapter seventy money is less than it was last year, so we're looking at a deficit in the budget that we need to fill. And the finance committee has a balanced budget to propose, so we're looking all right there. Then five is to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer a sum of money to operate the water department. Six is the sum of money to operate the sewer department. Then seven is to authorize the board to accept gifts, bequest, and donations of money in real and personal property to the town. That's just an annual housekeeping thing. Article eight is to vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into any and all necessary lease agreements and other dispositions of personal property. They don't know why this one's still in here, because they think under the municipal, Municipal Management Act that they passed six, seven years ago, it requires all leases to come in front of town meeting.
I was going to say, I thought we had to hold a special town meeting for the lease. Do you want me to remove that article?
I don't know, let's check with town council to see if, if there's a... If there's a reason that we're keeping it in there or not. But I'm sure, maybe it's because disposition of personal property is also in there.
I'll see if we need to change the language, maybe.
Article nine is to vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for and expend funds that are available from state and federal grants. 10, authorize the board of water commissioners to apply for and expend state and federal grants. 11, to see if the town, to give the town treasurer the authority to invest town funds in short-term investments as the treasurer deems prudent. And she has been very prudent about saving the town a ton of money by reinvesting and changing around our finances. Article 12, vote to authorize the board of selectmen to sell and transfer titles in the name of the town of North Brookfield to any properties or lands obtained through legally acquired tax title foreclosures. Article 13 is the revolving accounts in the caps that we set for those. Article 14, appropriate borrow transfer from available funds, the sum of money to operate the North Brookfield emergency squad. Article 15 is to accept the town's apportionment of the FY 2020.
Or be 2020, I gotta change that.
No, FY 2022.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's going into 2022. Chapter 90 funds. And then article 16 was a petition that was circulated by a local resident to see if the town will vote to approve and appropriate $22,500 to correct problems with stormwater from town streets and adjacent properties that causes flooding at the residence of 94 Summer Street and the land and streets downstream on Prospect and Summer Street to be used by the town highway department to contract to correct stormwater problems. We were forced to put that on there, nobody's in support of that, not the finance committee, not the board of selectmen. But it'll be up to the town voters as to whether they, we'll have more to say on that at the town meeting. Suffice it to say, the town, even if the town was discharging water, there's a recent case out of Sturbridge that says if it's been going on for more than 20 years continuously, then the town is not responsible for it. It's called a prescriptive easement, and we're not responsible for it. I think this has been ongoing for 40-plus years, and only now has he approached us to remedy it, so. But the town voters will be able to decide because it's on the warrant. Any further to say on any of that stuff? Did we miss anything? Do you know anything that we missed, or?
No, just a couple other ones.
I removed those.
Those are being removed.
Oh, these 17 to 19?
Yep.
Okay, didn't get it.
Anything else?
Not really.
I have something. This time you made it.
Yep.
We spoke of removing some trees on the water department property about a month ago. And I've met with the homeowners verbally, and they're all in fit, definitely about it, excuse me, to the project. And they're actually happy about it if we're gonna go forward. So I just want to clarify through the board, are we moving forward? I know financially we're struggling a little bit. Before I spend any more time on it, I want to know if we're gonna move forward.
How are we paying for that?
Out of the tree expense.
All right.
I believe we can do the majority of the work this year and perhaps any follow-up remedial. The board spoke of doing a walkthrough. I said we don't want to go up there and mark all the trees that are gonna stay if we're not gonna move forward.
Yeah, and that's the safety thing, right? Those are the trees that are coming down and.
The ice. The road builds up with ice there because it's shaded all winter long. It's shaded right there.
That's right.
So you get ice filled up, and they have to go up and scrape it and salt.
Yeah, and there's money dedicated to that, right?
There's money, there's money available for it, yes.
Okay.
But we had talked about going up and picking, not clearcutting that area because we don't want to clearcut anything in town, but.
I was gonna mark the trees to be saved.
The ones to be saved, yeah. And then we can go, someone can go up and look at it, okay it, if everybody's. We need to do it because of the safety thing. Because when you come around that corner coming down the hill with all the ice.
For sure.
At least some sun will get in there.
Yeah.
Melt some of it, so.
Yeah, well, you're the goodwill ambassador for the tree cutting project, so.
Well, I think with Jason, if he wants to walk up and, you know, you can mark the trees and then before he contracts somebody to do it. Because you guys are gonna help with it, right? With some of the brush removal.
It's gonna be a lot of, the majority will be a contract.
Yeah.
With the local.
Yeah.
That I've already spoke to, don't need any confirmation, excuse me, conservation. There's no cutting plan because it falls under that grant. So it's simply make it happen.
More of a maintenance type of thing.
Right, any objection?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope, I'm good with it. Let us know when you're ready to go up there, so. Yep, well, tis the season. Try to get it before it's too hot and everything, so.
All right, anything else?
Can I ask a question on the warrant, Donovan Rowood purchase?
Yep.
What's that for?
So we met with Hawkins, who owns it. And because the fire department would cost us 13 million, what's the latest?
I think it was down to 8.
8 million.
That's a potential site for a fire department?
Yes, well, no, what we want to do is try to purchase that. And then highway, we'll move into that garage with the lift and stuff. And of course, there are salt sheds right there, and all the trucks will be there. Then the highway, fire would take over the highway building and renovate that building. And instead of 8 million dollars, we can do it all, we think, for 3-ish. So it would save us quite a bit of money if we could do that. And then they get a new building, and they will store their equipment. And then renovate the old fire station to be fire headquarters. So no equipment will be in there, it'll just be the administrative offices. And I think we can solve a couple of problems.
A lot more economically.
Yeah, so if the town, of course, that would have to be a debt exclusion. We would have to borrow the money to fund it. But we would have to borrow the money for the station, so.
Well, we definitely need to do something with the fire department, so.
Yes.
Sounds like a good idea.
We've been working on these scenarios. And what it would do also is be neaten up this whole school street because all these plows, sand, trucks, and everything would be down somewhere else. And all the fire trucks would be inside.
Even though they're much better looking than they used to be, it'd still be nice to move them all in.
And it comes with a revenue stream because when we purchase it, we get the storage unit business with it. So there'd be a revenue stream for the town. Well, all that would come to us. We just have to have somebody, somebody part-time maybe to oversee the collections and stuff like that. So it should pay for itself, an assistant paying for it. So that's the plan, that's, and then that's why we had to do an appraisal to make sure that what we were gonna pay was fair to both sides. You know, we're not gonna pay a lot of money.
So are they looking to sell the property themselves and move somewhere else? Or going, just closing up the business, or?
Well, he is looking to move somewhere else. He wants to stay in business, and it makes sense to sell to the town because we're not gonna ask for an encompete. We don't care if he opens up his business somewhere else. If he were to sell that to another garage business, they would ask for an encompete for a number of years, and he would have to not service ongoing customers that he services now.
Yeah, I was just curious if he was staying in business or retiring, whatever.
Yeah, no, his plan is to stay in business.
He's not old enough to retire yet. And it's still kind of up in the air because the town has to agree.
Yeah.
To this, so. But it's a threefer. Fire gets something, highway gets something, and we clean up school street over here. And you get income from the storage sheds down there.
Yeah, for a lot less money.
Lot less money than what was proposed, you know.
And then the sewer thing is looking good, too, because, you know, town meeting approved the 13 million as the worst-case scenario. And it looks like there'll be a lot of grants and USDA low-interest funding that'll be coming through, so we won't be borrowing as much. So fiscally, we think we'll be in a good spot, debt-wise anyway. So that's the ask.
Thank you for the information.
Yep.
Sounds good, Dave.
Sounds great.
All right, so.
We gotta go, we have announcements.
Yep, a couple of announcements. We reiterate the date of the annual town election, May 3rd. Then the special town meeting, May 7th at 6:00 PM, followed by the annual town meeting at 7:00 PM. That'll be at the elementary school auditorium, as it normally is. The next master plan public forum Zoom presentation will take place April 15th. That's Thursday night, 6:30 PM. Topic is downtown North Brookfield, and the link is available on the town website. I guess I'll do a, I'll call.
Co-brite tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yep.
And then it's election season, and campaign signs are going out, and.
April 4th.
Oh, Earth Day?
Yeah, that's the town like plan Saturday, April 24th.
April 24th.
I think they usually do that at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, yep, and that's on.
It's Saturday, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, so if you, if you're around April 24th, Earth Day.
And if the bags are left on the side of the road, the highway will be bringing them up. Along with the same day, there'll be trucks at the highway for them to, if they want, they're like, bring them to the highway and put them in the trucks.
Okay, excellent. All right, so if you're available, even if you can do a small section of road around your house, that'd be great. Leave the bags out, and we'll come and collect them. Or you can deliver them to the highway.
Do we have to use the purple bags, or can we just use regular black bags?
I, I'm not sure. I would say if you use black bags, we'll pick them up.
They usually hand out.
They do.
At the seniors.
Right at the highway, there'll be an individual there through the event handling, handing out the bags.
Well, we shouldn't charge people for picking up roadside trash.
That's the contact for us to go, or myself, I should say, to go pick up the bags, inform the person that's staffed here, and that person will convey the message to us.
Too bad we can't fingerprint it all and send tickets out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the other thing. If there is abandoned trash somewhere, and you can identify who abandoned it somehow through mail that might have been left in there or receipts that identifies who the owner might be, bring it to our attention. We have a $300 fine proposal, and I'm not afraid to send them out, so. Bring it to our attention.
Trash, go dump.
All right, anything else?
Do I get two to 15 minutes, or?
Yeah, how many should I?
I just said, do we have to go into executive, or?
We do, what do you have?
He's kicking us out.
Just the rail trail rules. We did make a list of rail trail rules for those that don't get it. The North Brookfield Rail Trail Rules and Regulations. If you're listening, please adhere to the following rules. Use the trail at your own risk. No unauthorized motorized vehicles are allowed. Please be considerate of other trail users. The trail is open from dusk to dawn, dawn to dusk. Respect the privacy of adjacent property owners, which means kind of stay on the trail. Please do not litter. Walking, hiking, biking, cross-country skiing are allowed. Horseback riding is allowed as long as the owners pick up after their horse. Dogs are allowed on leash. Owners must pick up after their dog. And just by the way, my wife and I walked today on the upper section here, and someone put out a couple of signs that says, please pick up after your dog. So whoever did that, thank you, saves me from doing it. Please respect the rules. It took many hours of hard work by volunteers along with donations of money, supplies, and materials to clear the trail. As of March 18th, 2021, the trail is not finished. With your help and the dedication of our volunteers, we can keep the progress moving forward. Grants have been applied for, and your donations are welcome. If you are interested in donating or volunteering, please contact the board of selectmen's office at 508-867-0200. And I've been working with the crew for the last three Saturdays down off of Brickyard Road. We're making a little park. It's kind of an offshoot off of Brickyard. It's like 20 acres up in there. There's a nice field up in there. It's a nice break from walking the straight, normal path. And probably in the next two weekends, we'll have that cleared out and mowed up there. Cub scouts, boy scouts, girl scouts, whoever could go up, have a picnic, maybe do a tip-out or something up there. Even the school could bring the kids down there. Brendan and I have been picking up trash. He's the trash guy in town. And Saturday, we took a truckload of trash down there. There's about five more truckloads we have to pull out of there, tires and whatnot. And we're bringing it to the, to the station on Saturdays. What else? Also, on last week, my wife and I walked from the town park on the West Brookfield Road over to Wyndhamits on the town park trail down there. And it's a great walk if you guys want to get out, park down by the pond down there, and take a walk. It's a nice nature walkway. The guys have been clearing that down there pretty well. You can go over to Wyndhamits, you can go up the hill. It's a great walk, too. Somewhere else, where, you know, parks and recreation, we're trying to get the open space done for the townspeople. You gotta get out and start using it. So that was it, thank you.
Okay, we did have some additions that we need to, do we need to?
If we can just do the central mass regional planning grant, grant agreement, and then the state aid, I mean, the straight, the, sorry, the grant that the fire department got. He got a $10,000 grant from the state, and he's using it to buy pagers.
Yeah.
To help with communication. There's three places you need to initial or sign.
All right, so I'll detain a motion to authorize signature on this one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all right, that, sign. I don't know what else I need to sign here. So do you want my?
He wants your initials for its start.
Okay, can do that. And then the last thing is what, the CDBG grant management agreement?
Yeah, they, because they manage our CDBG grant and its boilerplate, saving sign last year.
Yeah. All right, I'll detain a motion to approve the management agreement.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye. Bye, guys. Bye.
Goodnight.
Bye.
All right.
And then we can do the fire reports next week.
Yeah, we'll do that next meeting. All right, anything else? Do you have anything else?
Don't, we don't need to do anything with this, do we?
No, I just gave it to us.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, so I'll detain a motion to enter executive session.
I move to enter executive session for, do you get the reasons? Reasons one and two.
We're doing reason two.
It's two.
Reason two.
You need to negotiate.
Yes.
Negotiations, and we will exit executive session only to adjourn.
Second.
Jason Petras, yes?
Deokai, yes?
John Tripp, yes.
Okay, goodnight, everybody, thank you.